Good evening, everyone, and welcome to this regularly scheduled meeting of Bowling Green City Council. We are pleased that you're here this evening. Thank you. Kay, would you please begin by calling the roll?
Osbacher.
Here.
Gordon.
Here.
Harold.
Here.
Jeffers.
Here.
Robinette.
Here.
Roland.
Here.
Sam Fardino.
Here.
The minutes of the meeting that was held on March 19th, 2018 were presented to council prior to this meeting. Are there any additions or corrections to these minutes? Seeing none is their motion to approve.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. The motion passes. The minutes are approved as presented. Kay, do we have correspondence this evening?
Yes, distributed to you prior to the meeting was a listing of budget transfers for the month of April. Those require your approval, please.
Is there a motion to approve the budget transfer?
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. The motion passes. The budget transfers are approved as presented.
That's all I have.
Thank you, Kay. I believe that we do have a special recognition with Mr. Mayor at this point.
Thank you very much, Mr. President, members of council and all assembled. We do indeed have a special proclamation, a bit of recognition tonight. We do this on an annual basis, and even though that in and of itself might seem like it's that time of the year, it's routine and so forth, I like to think it's important that we take this time to reflect on the Fair Housing Act, what it really means for our community, what it means for our state, what it means for us as a nation. And some of us will remember very clearly, very vividly, when the act was adopted in 1968. It was an interesting time period right then, and I was on the staff at Kent State University, and I can tell you, it was very interesting during those days. And this was one of those very, very important issues, because I was not only involved with it from a university perspective, but also very much from a governmental perspective because of my time in Washington. And having been on hand to see the adoption of the Civil Rights Act in 1964, especially when it was adopted in the Senate, in watching them cast those votes. So these things, and all of us in our own special way, take on important meetings. And so I'm going to ask tonight if any member is present, I know one is present here from the Human Relations Commission. So Margaret, it looks like you're at Margaret Monique, who's been a very, very dedicated member of the city's Human Relations Commission. And I really appreciate your being here tonight, Margaret. And no arm twisting at all for you, I know. You feel very strongly about this, and as do all members of the city's Human Relations Commission. So if you'll bear with me, I will read this once again. Whereas the Federal Fair Housing Act of 1968 and the Fair Housing Amendments Act Title VIII of the Civil Rights Act of 1968 states that discrimination in the sale, rental, and financing of housing is illegal when based on race, color, religion, nation origin, sex, familial status, or handicap, disability. And whereas Ohio was one of the first states to enact fair housing legislation, and in 1992, the state expanded its fair housing law to make it substantially equivalent to the Federal Fair Housing Act. And whereas the principle of fair housing is not only by law, but a basic human necessity and an aliable right inscribed in the Constitution of the state of Ohio as adopted in 1851. And whereas the city of Bowling Green supports fair housing efforts to eliminate discrimination in housing by providing education to seekers of housing, rental property owners, managers, and others regarding state and federal fair housing laws, monitors local advertising for potential fair housing violations, and reports violations of the Fair Housing Acts to the Ohio Civil Rights Commission. And whereas April has traditionally been designated as Fair Housing Month by the President of these United States and by the Department of Housing and Urban Development. Now therefore, I, Richard A. Edwards, Mayor of the city of Bowling Green, Ohio, do hereby proclaim the month of April 2018 as Fair Housing Month. And with that, I'm going to present this to Margaret Monique, as I said, a longtime member of the city's Human Relations Commission. And I know we'll have you up here before, you've given us sufficient notice that you will be ending your service in May, at the end of May. Maybe we'll squeeze in a June meeting, too? Okay, very good, good. And we look forward to that very much. But I just want to thank you very much, Margaret, and I present this to you and the members of the commission, and feel free, if you would care to make any comments on behalf of the council.
Well, we have a meeting on Friday, so I will be presenting this. And I also just wanted to say that it ties into the resolution that the city made for being a welcoming city for Bowling Green, because housing is one of the issues in being a safe, welcoming, and inclusive community. So I think this is as important as ever for us now. So we're really pleased to have this, and I will present it on Friday.
Mr. President, members of council, that ends my special recognitions until I get to my report. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Edwards. At this point, we come to lobby visitation. Kay, is there anyone who has signed up for lobby visitation?
Yes, the first person is Jack Schell.
Thank you. Would you please approach the microphone with your questions or comments?
Yeah, I live at 827 Lafayette Boulevard, and that's right beside Paul Road, and I would like to just give my two cents' worth, I guess. I see it's the third reading, and I unfortunately wasn't here, you know, a couple of weeks ago. The ordinance is, I understand that you want to increase the speed limit to 45 miles an hour past Lafayette Boulevard, and I have a big problem with that because I really feel that people are already going 45 mile an hour. So if you increase that speed limit, I can just see people coming into Bowling Green or going out of Bowling Green about 55 mile an hour. Since the first of the year, we've had a car in the ditch right beside our house. We've had a car in the backyard of my neighbor's house. And about three weeks ago Sunday, I had a car coming around Lafayette and Paul that ended up in my yard. I mean, granted, he was only in there two foot, but he was coming so fast that he couldn't make the corner, and it was bone dry. It's not like it was raining out or snowing out. And I see this all the time. This is even before you get to Lafayette. I know that you had a study done, I guess, and I just wondered if the study included, like, the police reports of speeding out there on West Paul Road. The police department used to be out there quite a bit, and since the first of the year, I haven't seen them, because they sit right there at the list station. They actually sit in my backyard. So I look out the backyard all times, day and night. I can see them sitting there whether it's 3:00 in the morning. If anything, I would like to see you not take Lafayette as the starting point for the 45 mile an hour, at least go out to Legacy, and that's out there in the new subdivision. And I can see raising that from 45 mile an hour to the corporation limits. But I think if you raise that starting at Lafayette on out, I think speed is going to be a problem. So.
Very good. Thank you, Mr. Schell. We appreciate your comments.
Okay.
I don't know if you noticed, but the police chief is in attendance this evening, so you probably heard your comments.
Okay.
Thank you.
Mary Hinkleman.
I'm Mary Hinkleman. I'm the Managing Director for Downtown Bowling Green. I'm here tonight to let you all know Art Walk is right around the corner, April 28th. It's a big event for our downtown as we use it for a tool to bring people to our downtown and as a fundraiser for our flowers that we do along Main Street and down East Worcester Street. We've got a lot of components this year that have just come together perfectly. We have 25 establishments in the downtown that have agreed to host a gallery to a local artist. So that's 25 businesses that you can go in and out of and see what the artists have, as well as what the businesses have there. We have a quilt exhibit at the Four Corners Center. This is the fifth year for the quilt exhibit. The Busy Thimble, which is a business in the downtown, as well as the Black Swamp Quilters, put this event together as a part of Art Walk. The whole event overall, I'm so sorry, I completely forgot to say, we do this in conjunction with the BG Arts Council. I apologize for that, because they are very instrumental in helping us get our artists. We also have a project, our Call to Artists already went out, so the artist registration is closed. But for casual artists and for nonprofit organizations and charities in Bowling Green, we still have the opportunity to participate as a part of project charity, and I encourage you to check out our website at www.downtownbgohio.org for information on that, if you'd like to participate, if you're creative in any way. We also have a fine art raffle. Ronnie Rosenberg, who's an artist here in Bowling Green, has donated an original art piece, it's called "The Box Turtle," to the foundation to help us raise funds for the flowers. Again, it's a beautiful piece, it's pictured on the website as well. And something brand new for the Art Walk this year, for our culinary arts, we have seven restaurants participating in a One Bite Experience. That's a $10 fee. Everything else for Art Walk is free, but there's a $10 fee for this, and you can go to each of the seven restaurants and sample their amuse bouge, which is, excite your mouth in French. And you can do a people's choice, but we have three special judges coming in, yet to be announced through the media, that will be the actual judges for the seven restaurants, and they will win a cash purse for the best. I'm hoping you come down and support the downtown. Thank you.
Thank you, Mary. Thank you. Moving to the introduction of new legislation, I have two ordinances from the Public Utilities Committee, an ordinance authorizing the Utilities Director to request qualifications and enter into a contract or contracts for engineering services for improvements to the Western Water Tower, and also an ordinance authorizing the Utilities Director to advertise for bids and enter into a contract or contracts and/or participate in the inter-local purchasing system for roof replacement at the water pollution control facility. Official reports, Mayor Edwards.
Thank you very much, Mr. President, members of council and all assembled. Just a couple of items from my perspective here. First is a very simple reminder that I suspect you do not need any reminders, but tomorrow morning, we have a very important community event that will be taking place, and that's our Community Interfaith Breakfast, Peace Through Religious Diversity. And this will be the fourth anniversary of our Community Interfaith Breakfast, and it will begin at 7:15 and 9:00, a free breakfast provided by South Side Six. Once again, we're so grateful to the owners there and their family for doing this. Keynote speaker is going to be Dr. Michael S. Brown, President of the Campus Multi-Faith Alliance at BG SU. And the event will be held in the Junior Fair Building, and again, you know, the time and so forth there. So I look forward to having you join with me there if it works with your schedule and convenient and so forth there. Secondly, I just want to mention that the State of the City program will be, has been set now for May 1 at the Wood County District Public Library at 8:00 in the morning. And this year, given the fact that we are in the charter review process and so forth, we thought we would do something with focus on our three branches of government. We mayor the state government, we mayor the federal government. We are a mayor, administrator, council, form of government, and so we will have reports from the executive branch, namely the administration, and I will be doing that along with our wonderful municipal administrator, Lori Treter. We will hear from the legislative branch, President Osbacher will be doing that on behalf of city council. And we are also asking the judicial branch, if you will, the judge of our court, Mark Redden, and to give a brief report on how things are going for the municipal court, because they not only cover the city of Bowling Green, but that court serves 16 townships of the 19 here in Wood County. So it's a pretty tall order in terms of their business out there. So again, that date is May 1, early in the morning, 8:00, and we look forward to that program. It's always very well attended, and we especially appreciate our friends sitting in the back. The media does an outstanding job of covering that event, and maybe we'll even have a live broadcast. Is that right, Clint? So, okay, very, very good. The last thing I just want to mention is it becomes, it sounds like a little bit with, like I said, an entirely different frame of reference, but every year, we do the fair housing thing. It's something that's very, very important. And every year, fortunately, our city is selected to be for special awards as Tree City USA. And again, it's one of these things we don't want to take for granted, because a lot of time and effort goes in, the members of the Tree Commission, our wonderful arborist, Grant Jones, and working very hard. And I just want to say that this year, for the 38th year in a row, Bowling Green has been recognized as Tree City, as a Tree City, and the 24th time that the city has received the Growth Award. Now, this award presentation will take place in Upper Sandusky for all the Northwest Ohio quadrant. They'll be meeting there on April 18th. It's always a wonderful program. This will be one of the few years that I'm going to miss because of another event, because Sue Clark has got something going on, and so I'm going to have to, given all the time and effort we put into economic development, I promised Sue that I would be there for that. But I always hate to miss the Tree City program as well. But we are going to be well represented as a city, and if any of you would care to go down for that, I know that Lori or Joe, along with Grant Jones, can certainly make that happen. But we have met once again the program's four requirements, a tree board or department, which we have, a tree care ordinance, which we have, an annual community forestry budget of at least $2 per capita, and an Arbor Day observance and proclamation, which is set for, I believe, the very first part of May. Isn't that the end of April, Joe? You're drawing a blank, so that makes two of us. But in any event, that's always great fun, because we plant trees and do lots of good things there. But we should all take great joy and have feelings of really great joy for the continuation of our being named as a Tree City USA, and heaven forbid, if any of us should, you know, someday develop a hiccup and we somehow, no, that won't happen. We got to make sure that it doesn't happen, because there's such pride in our trees and this community, and all we know is that sometimes when things don't go right, or we have the unfortunate experience of having to take down the special kind of tree, like we did on the Slid Hill, which is very, very painful for all of us, but we had no choice, and that matters, you well know. But I do want to just, once again, to call attention to the members of the Tree Commission. Joe Baker, who was the horticulturist at the university for many, many years and taught botany there, and he's been terribly ill, but he's on the mend, but he is going to have to step off of the Tree Commission, and that's going to be a real loss there. George Clemens, retired professor of chemistry at the University Kent Riker, worked for many, many years for the city, and Mark Wenning, and Terrence Leek, and of course, our arborist, Grant Jones. And so we'll be, we do have a need to, we'll have a vacancy on the Tree Commission, and so we'll be filling that in the very near future there. And if you have any recommendations or thoughts, feel free to share them with me. And, Mr. President, members of council, that concludes my report, unless you have questions of me.
Other questions for Mayor Edwards? Very good. Thank you, sir.
Okay, you're welcome.
Municipal Administrator, we have Mr. Fawcett standing in for Ms. Treter this week. Other questions for Mr. Fawcett?
Perhaps. I don't see if Brian Kraft tonight, and it's great that's such a thick crowd, I can't be certain of that, but is Brian Kraft here? Okay. I wanted to ask him a few questions tonight about the speed limit issue, and I'd hate to put you on the spot, but you might be our next best source. Could you explain a little bit about the studies that went into the?
Yep. So it's set by statute and standards. It's the 85th percentile, which was referenced earlier, which is the percentage of vehicles traveling at that rate of speed. It's set by, they measure it by, they call it a tube count, and they set in a zone that they measure the number of vehicles that pass through it. Within that are traffic statistics or accident statistics from the Ohio Department of Safety, the number of intersections and driveways. They set up both zones, on the west from Lafayette to the corporation limit, and on the east from roughly the 50 mile an hour zone to the west. I forget the starting point on the west, but it's set by the statute. Both of the areas supported the raising of the speed limit to 45. I think we probably could have raised it a little bit higher, but the recommendation coming out of the Traffic Commission was 45 in both zones.
And the speed is measured by, is it just like one of those things that goes across the road and just kind of measures?
That's the tube count, yep.
Yeah.
But then they put, within the factors that they consider are the number of intersections, the number of driveways, the lane width, and then the accident statistics that I referenced.
Great. Thank you, Joe.
Yep.
Joe, I have a further question about that, please. Is this really set by state ordinance and therefore not by city council, so to speak? How much of a role do we even play?
Well, we do play a role, and there is a section of the Revised Code that does establish how speed limits are determined, and part of that is the study that I referenced through ODOT.
That, our ordinance or state?
Well, the Revised Code has specific standards for what speed limits can go where.
Okay, that's state.
Yep. And then how municipalities are to apply that. You know, that seems like more of a legal question than administrative in nature, but...
I get the gist. We, council pretty much has to go by state.
Correct.
Okay. Thank you. Am I correct, mister?
The suggestion by someone that would know that area earlier was to adjust it from Lafayette to Legacy, and go from Legacy to the city limits, which isn't a great deal of space. But is that something that, if we did a follow-up study for that area, would that be an option for us?
Well, I don't know what you would study. The follow-up study would just confirm the first one. The zone that the first traffic study occurred is right within that area, so...
But if it's a reduced area, then the study would be of that reduced area?
Right. But what I'm saying is, if the first traffic study was from Lafayette to the corporation limit, that includes the area that you're talking about within Legacy. So if you're going to re-measure a shorter distance, it's just going to confirm what the first study found, which is that 85% of the vehicles traveling through that area, the comfortable rate is 45 miles an hour.
Okay, so it would not necessitate any additional measurements. Is there any, so if it was taken from Haskins to the city limit, and then there was a determination made for Lafayette till the city limit, how was it determined that it would start at Lafayette?
Yeah.
So how much trouble would we be in if we went from Legacy on?
Right.
Right. So within? Okay. So within 80% of the 50 mile per hour? So 40, I'm doing this in my head, 40 would be within that tolerance? Okay. and it just turned out that there was quite a bit of speeding, then we could legitimately, without going back, make it 40? Because this was in? By ordinance? Okay. Right. Okay. So the number of options? Go ahead, I'm sorry. Yeah, absolutely. So we have the option later if it turns out that 45 is... How long is a present study down? Fair enough? Okay. Thank you, I appreciate that.
So, oh, sorry, Joe, one more thought. So the speed limit is 35 now, but when the tubes were across the road, 45 was basically what people were traveling 85% of the time and up.
That's my understanding.
And, you know, as I understand, the ODOT's concept is people basically travel at what they feel safe and comfortable at. So is that the justification for honoring the tube? And Mike, you did say that the accident reports are few and far between there? Thank you.
I'm going to jump in here now. I was going to make these comments when we go to vote on this, but it seems like everybody's thinking about it now. If I had my brothers, we would all just go a lot slower. I'd probably make every speed limit in the city 25 miles per hour. That'd be great for pedestrians and bicyclists. That's not going to happen, and one of the reasons it's not going to happen is because we are not an island unto ourselves. We want to be like other communities in Ohio. We want people to know what to expect from one place to the next. I think it's crazy that we drive 80 miles an hour down I-75. I think if we slowed that down, people wouldn't tend to go 45 or 50 on the stretch of Paul Road. But that's not our purview here, to change everybody's attitude about our general speeds. I think our Traffic Commission has looked carefully at this, and they don't take their work lightly, and the police are very involved with this, and I think if they are confident that they have the right speed for these two stretches of road, I'd probably go along with it.
Thank you. Any additional questions for Mr. Fawcett?
Thank you, Joe. Planning Director, Ms. Saylor.
Planning Director, Ms. Saylor. I believe Ms. Saylor is here this evening. Parks and Recreation Director, Ms. Ottley.
So I said earlier, I was not going to have a report, but I did forget one thing. So first of all, I want to remind you, this Friday is the annual adult egg scramble. So please sign up, or if not, just come by and observe, because it is a riot. You don't want that is, anybody here? I've talked about it before here, but grab me afterwards or go to our website. And the other thing is, speaking of the website, the summer brochure is electronically on the website. It is at the printers, for those folks that are a little old school and actually like the printed copy. We make less every year, but some people do really enjoy that. So we will have those very soon. But it is all on the website. So just go to the Parks and Rec section, and you can check that out. Lots of tweaks to some favorites and some new cool stuff that I'll leave the surprise for you. And I have plenty of time to report on that later. But resident registration does start April 30th, and non-resident registration, that's hard to say three times fast, starts May 14th. So it's coming, I promise. Even though we'll probably have snow on Friday for the egg scramble. But it goes on. Neither snow nor sleet nor rain will stop the egg scramble, so. That's all I have, unless you have questions.
Questions for Kristen.
You're coming for that big cash prize, right?
Thank you. City Attorney, Mr. Marsh. Questions for Mr. Marsh? Thank you. Utilities Director, Mr. O'Connell, is not with us this evening. And Public Works Director, Mr. Kraft, is not with us this evening either. As always, if you do have any questions, you could run those through the municipal administrator's office and copy those directors as necessary. Do we have any council committee reports this evening?
Mr. President.
Mr. Harold.
The Publics, Lands and Buildings Committee met last Monday, and met again this Monday, and possibly, depending on if it's available next Monday. Can you check to see if, or?
Yeah, I'll have to check. I didn't bring the calendar with me, I forgot.
Okay, we may, to be determined for next week. Last Monday, we met and went over some very draft preliminary recommendations, if you will, for the 20 factors that we had identified. And just a few questions to the administration. Tonight, we met, and I must commend my colleague Sandy Rowland for a very extensive research. She was given an assignment a week ago and just knocked the ball out of the park. So thank you, Sandy, for that. She went over her research, the first part of the meeting, and then we had a good amount of time for citizens and concerned individuals to address the committee, and that is always fruitful. So we're moving ahead. I envision that next week's meeting, if we can schedule it, next week's meeting, hopefully, we'll have answers to some of the questions from the administration. And we'll have a report by John on what he has for us. And so we're moving along. We're, it's, it's, as we explore it, there's more and more layers to it. But you can rest assured that whatever the outcome, it won't be from lack of research, and it won't be from lack of public input. We're erring on the side of being thorough, methodical, and getting plenty of public input. So that's my report.
Thank you, Bill.
Bill, one question on that. Just, you don't have to go into any detail on this, but how many brick and mortar restaurateurs have you heard from on this issue?
Let me see. Rough, I'd say maybe five or six, roughly.
Mr. President, on behalf of the Planning, Zoning and Economic Development Committee, I have a cap update. And for the, for my colleagues on council, President Osbacher and I met with Mayor Edwards, Administrator Tredder and Assistant Administrator Fawcett a week or so ago to ask them their thoughts on the cap and on moving forward with its recommendation. And during that brief meeting, we learned that the city has been moving forward with an initiative that directly aligns with CAP priorities one and two, the core development and target reinvestment goals, which can be found on page nine of the CAP document. This effort is a joint project between the city and Bowling Green State University to develop a land development strategy. I learned that the funds for this project were included in the 2017 budget, and that a consultant has been hired, and the work is underway. And the goal is to develop an executable strategy for economic development of the East Creek corridor. Very encouraged by that, but that's at its beginning stages. Also learned that Habitat, I think we're all aware, the Habitat for Human projects that will see homes built in the near future also directly addresses CAP priority number three, the single-family reinvestment adjacent downtown area. So there has been and continues to be progress in some of the areas identified in the cap. I believe that we will all look forward to periodic updates from the administration on the progress of that land development strategy as it moves forward. We understand that the city administration has a great deal of expertise and experience relevant to most, if not all, of the CAP priority areas. And as we work to establish council priorities for moving forward with opportunities identified in the cap, it's important that we solicit and consider staff review and recommendations in our discussion. President Osbacher has asked that the Planning, Zoning and Economic Development Committee begin the process of establishing priorities or action to implement the initiative identified in the cap. And to that end, the cap identifies short-term priorities, 16 of them, medium-term, 35 of them, and long-term, 10 goals. And those are outlined on pages 10 to 16 of the CAP document. My suggestion is that to start this process of prioritization, that each member of council provide a list of two to four projects that you'd like to see implemented in each of the short, medium, and long-term goal categories. And then, once we have that list, we, perhaps as a committee as a whole, can prioritize that list. And then, it's my understanding, that President Osbacher will then ask the Planning, Zoning and Economic Development Committee to develop a recommended approach for implementation. I see a couple of preliminary steps that will get us to that meat of the committee work. Bruce, I know you've already sent me a short list, but you may want to relook it in terms of breaking it down. I did take a look at your list. You've got, your list included four in a short term, one in two medium-term goals on the list already. But if that, President, that meets your approval, I think that's the way we can get started.
Yeah, Greg, thank you. I agree with your assessment of our meeting with Mayor Edwards and administration officials. I think it was encouraging to both of us to be reminded, actually, that there are some things happening that, you know, we as a group have not discussed. So I think that we should all be pleased about that. And certainly support your idea of soliciting from each council member a list of priorities and breaking them down by, you know, short-term, midterm, and long-term. As we had previously discussed, there is a lot of meat in that report. And I think that if we're going to try to capitalize on some of the fresh thought and momentum coming out of the cap process, it's going to be valuable for us to do just what you suggested. Let's pare it down a little bit, and let's try to get, you know, some idea of what each of us is looking at in those three different areas, and take a look at those upon their own merits. So I would look forward to hearing from Greg, to hear that he's getting that input from all of us. If you have any questions, certainly can contact myself or Mr. Robinette.
Mr. Chairman, could I ask if you could put in writing what the assignment is? It was priorities, short, medium, and long-term on three projects?
Well, my recommendation is that each of us simply look at the list, and they are, you know, because they are broken down into short, mid, and long-term. In each of those categories, identify two to four projects that are important to you. Don't worry about priority. I mean, you can prioritize your own list. But once we have everybody's input, then we, as a group, will prioritize that collective list. And once it's prioritized, we'll, that's when we'll figure out how to implement. So the overall, the prioritization won't occur until we've all...
Sure, yeah. We're just listing.
Given our suggestions, I'll consolidate them. And that's why I suggested maybe a committee of the whole or something to go through that prioritization process, to not counsel my, but President Osbacher. But I think, once we're done with those two steps, we'll be in a position to determine how to implement.
When would you like that, Greg?
I'd like to see all of that input to me prior to the next meeting, prior to the council.
Good.
And all I need is a bulletized list, doesn't have to be fancy, email. I'll organize it, they have your input.
Okay.
Mr. Chair, it also appears we have some students here, we have visitors that might be students. Can you tell them briefly what CAP stands for and what it is, just so?
Well, your suggestion, Sandy, I think that you should just go ahead and answer.
You're the chair, you're the chair. Do you want to do it, or do you want me?
What do you want?
Just briefly describe what CAP is, what it stands for, and...
The CAP is a community action plan that was developed with the aid of a consultant. It outlines a number of priorities in seven different areas that could be implemented if we, the council, Bowling Green, decide to implement. So we've got before us a long list of projects that were developed with a great deal of community input and guided by some experts. So we're at the point now where we've got this long list of projects, all of which can't happen all at one time, and some of which may never happen, because it's a multimillion-dollar project. We don't know. So our goal here, as a city council, is to go through those lists and identify those projects, I think, that we can accomplish in a way that makes sense to us, both by timeframe and by, we're early in the process. But the CAP document, if anybody's, Community Action Plan is available on the website. It's relatively concise in terms of the way it organizes the priorities are. I pointed out, the key, the meat of it is only, is organized in seven pages, pages 10 to 16 of a document. Easy to access and easy to review, period.
You get an A. Good job.
Sandy, I just want to say thank you for asking for that clarification. Since there are a number of students here tonight, I think it's important to mention that because the cap focuses on the east side of town, where most students happen to live, this is especially relevant for you, as well as permanent residents. And on that note, it might be a good idea to remind folks that Councilmember Zanfordino and I, tomorrow, have a constituent meeting targeting, focused on the cap and discussion of the cap. So if you'd like to come out, it's tomorrow night, starting at 6:00 PM at the Wood County District Public Library. Thanks.
Thanks, Nick.
Thank you. Additional committee reports. Okay, Kay, reading of legislation, please.
Legislation for first reading. Ordinance number 8672 for first reading. Ordinance authorizing the Utilities Director to request qualifications and enter into a contract or contracts for engineering services for improvements to the Western Water Tower. Ordinance number 8673 for first reading. Ordinance authorizing the Utilities Director to advertise for bids and enter into a contract or contracts and/or participate in the inter-local purchasing system for roof replacement at the water pollution control facility. Legislation for second reading. I think there's a, resolution of 3695 for second reading. Resolution adopting amendments to the Community Development Block Grant Citizen Participation Plan for the City of Bowling Green. I think there's a typo on the agenda, so...
Could you confirm it is 3695?
3695.
Thank you.
Ordinance number 8671 for second reading. Ordinance authorizing the municipal administrator to advertise for bids and enter into a contract or contracts for the cleaning of uniforms for the Department of Safety. And legislation for third reading. Ordinance number 8669 for third reading. Ordinance amending and adopting Section 73.15B of the Codified Ordances of the City of Bowling Green, Ohio Regarding Speed Limits.
Mr. President?
Mr. Zanfordino?
I move that we adopt ordinance 8669.
Second? It's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion?
Yeah, I, Mr. President, I think it would be prudent to, once this is adopted, assuming that it is, take another look at it in half a year and see what the police reports are, and see whether or not there's considerable speeding to warrant taking another look at the area that we discussed earlier to see if the speed limit would need to be adjusted. So the default would be to do this as per the study recommendation and Traffic Commission. But in half a year, come back and see if it's working. And if not, then maybe adjust it.
Thank you, Mr. Harold. Your suggestion is noted. Any further discussion? Kay, would you please call the roll?
Gordon?
Yes.
Harold?
Yes.
Jeffers?
Yes.
Robinette?
Yes.
Rowland?
Yes.
Zanfordino?
Yes.
Osbacher?
Yes. The motion passes. Ordinance 8669 is adopted. That completes the items on our agenda this evening. Is there any further business to come before council? He knows there are motions to adjourn.
So moved.
Second?
Thank you. It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Propose same sign. Motion passes, we are adjourned. Thank you, everyone.